Let me hit the record.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so now I have to go here. All right, so now we're being recorded. I'll call the meeting to order again. So I'm calling the meeting to order at six thirty P M on Tuesday, January the nineteenth, twenty twenty one. And this is a committee of the whole meeting of the council of the township of Edersburg Cardinal. And their volunteer members. And it's basically an administration finance committee meeting. And it's budget meeting number three of the twenty of the twenty twenty one budget cycle. So the chair is looking first for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a mover, please? Councilor Hunter moving, and is there a second or please? Counsel Cameron's seconding. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Those in favor? Okay, I see hands and I'll call the motion carried. And now I'm at item number three on the agenda, which is disclosure pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Um, are there any disclosures here this evening?
By me.
Okay, the chair notes, the chair notes that there's no disclosures. All right, now I'm gonna just, the next item on the agenda is uh action and information items. So I'm just gonna start with an information item, uh just to start things off. If everybody's got a piece of paper and a pencil, you may want to record about four uh data points that I'm going to give you uh from uh the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville and the county budget cycle. So to start with, I just want to show you, and I don't know whether you can see it or not, uh but this is the county budget binder. Uh it's about hundred and fifty to two hundred pages. I never did count them and but they are in a hundred and sixty one, hundred and sixty five pages. And the budget is broken down very, very detailed uh into an operational budget, a joint services committee budget and a capital budget. Now, some things that you may be interested in, uh the total county council budget is well over a hundred million dollars. Uh I'm not, I haven't got the exact number here in front of me, but that's not the one of the data points that I wanted to give you. The first data point that I want to give you is this. The, the staff has proposed to county council a budget which requires a one point four five percent increase in the county tax rate. Now, as a result of our last budget meeting, uh the I would, and there was no straw vote taken, but there were some members of county council who would like to see that tax rate increased, reduced to zero, no increase. There are other members of county council, and I'm one of them. I'll tell you right off the bat. There are other members of county council who are prepared to accept the one point four five percent increase. Now, another data point that you may be interested in. At the proposed tax rate that the staff is recommending, one percentage increase in the county tax rate raises four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Another point that you may be interested in is the following. If county council follows the staff recommendation for the one point four five percent increase, the median priced, excuse me, the median assessed home value in the United Counties is two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. That's the median. That means half of the residential properties in the counties are assessed uh uh excuse me, yes, are assessed above that point and half are assessed below that point. But those at the midpoint, at two hundred and twenty one thousand of residential assessment, will see their tax bill increase, their county tax bill increased by twelve dollars. Now, there's a lot of other information that I could give you from the county budget, but I just wanted to give you those sort of start starting data points. And I'm not gonna go into a lot more detail. Uh if if others are looking for more detail, I can provide it to you, or alternatively, I may, uh if I get a few minutes, pick out two or three other data points just as an interest to bring to the next meeting. Excuse me for one second. All right, so we're at the agenda item now, item number four. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Bradley.
What was the total county budget? Total county?
Yeah, I I I'm sorry, the number is buried there. It's over a hundred million.
Hundred million, okay. Thank you, thank you.
And I'll get some other data points for you. I'll break out the capital and the operating and the joint services. I'll break them out. Okay, so now I'm on uh item number four of the agenda again. Uh four A is the twenty twenty one draft council budget. So the the staff uh tonight is challenging us to go through uh four, five of these uh at uh operational budget, the council budget, the administration budget, policing, conservation, authority and cemetery, the planning budget and the economic development budget. So we'll go through them one at a time. Now, so the first is the draft council budget. Now, uh one of the things that I want to draw to your attention is the briefing note that we have in front of us. And the briefing note indicates that the purposes of the of the meeting is to review the twenty twenty one draft budget for council with an effort to agree to the draft in principle, following discussion and any committee amendments. Now, uh there are some of these uh budgets here over which we have little control that I'm prepared to see that, uh I I'm prepared to ask that the recommendation be action. Uh others I'm not, and I'm gonna explain my position just before the meeting starts. Personally, I don't like to commit to individual operational budgets uh until I can get a look at the overall picture of what the overall impact is gonna be. So I don't like piecemealing uh ourselves into commitments uh until we see the overall picture, but there are some exceptions and I'll tell you where when we get to them. Uh the fir- the 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 first one is not this draft council budget. But if you look at the briefing note and the numbers that you have in front of you, uh you can see uh that the overall draft twenty one council budget has decreased by one thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars or one point five percent mainly due to a decrease in I T services cost. Now, that uh sentence basically tells us the relationship between the twenty twenty one draft operating budget and the twenty twenty approved operating budget. In between those two numbers on page two of twenty eight, you see what our actual year-to-date expenditures were for twenty twenty, which is the eighty eight thousand number. So while we're getting a decrease of the twenty twenty one draft opposed to the twenty twenty actual, there's a, there's a, there's a, an increase in the twenty twenty one draft compared to the twenty twenty actual. Now, my first question is going to be for the treasurer to ask, uh how accurate are the twenty twenty actuals? Uh can you give us a kind of a range where you think you are with the twenty twenty one actual numbers?
Through the chair, a lot of the honorariums definitely paid out. Uh unfortunately, mileage uh for three members was just recently submitted, so that is not accurate. Um and same with some telephone. There is a little bit, there may be still some more, more expenses, so this is definitely not uh completely accurate to the twenty, to the final, final numbers.
Okay, so there's a bit, a bit more expenditure to be added here.
Yeah.
Okay, so now, uh uh does anybody else have any questions about this draft council budget?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, just uh just, just a couple of uh of of things for clarification. Uh just to draw to your attention on the honorarium, let's, let's not forget now that we all have another meeting to attend, which is the C D C meeting. Uh so we'll all be attending that, uh that meeting. Um also, we're down at line number sixteen dash fifty three thirty seven, senior support. Is that the uh the Walker House payouts and things like that?
To, through the chairs of the treasurer?
Uh yeah. I need, sorry, I need clarification. Which line are you talking about, cancer, Counsel Cameron?
Yeah, fifty dash fifty three thirty seven.
Yeah, that's Walker House.
That is, that is Walker House, okay. Now, on the mileage, um I know I was one of the counselors that was a little late getting them in. I apologize for that. But I don't really think that you're going to see an increase of three thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm kind of of the mind that it, that you budgeted uh draft for eight thousand. I think that might be a little bit high. Um and also, I'd like to know on line number sixteen fifty three oh seven miscellaneous. I, I see we've spent three hundred and fifty dollars, but we're budgeting for a thousand dollars. I, I'm just wondering if that can be reduced a little bit. Um and at the moment, uh yeah, at the moment, uh Mr. Mayor, that's uh that that's my queries at the moment.
Okay, so we're gonna leave those as hanging uh questions for the Bennett and see where other counselors come in here. Other counselors have questions. Uh looking for hands. Do you have a hand up there, Counselor Hunter?
Yes, I did. I don't know, I'm looking at the budget here, here it's down some day or uh I don't really see the uh point of trying to take a hundred dollars here and a hundred dollars there off this, this budget. It's below what it was last year. Doesn't look like we spent it anyway. I think the biggest portion was we didn't give out as many grants there that was really controlled by us. So uh I'd be prepared to approve the budget as recommended there right now. I don't see much, very little gain, any place that we're gonna gain. We're gonna gain a few dollars here and add some someplace else on it, so.
Anybody else want in here right now, Counselor?
I'll second that.
Well, I'm not calling uh for a motion here. But because I I want to draw your attention to line sixteen fifty three twenty eight, conference and conventions. You'll notice that there was nine thousand five hundred budgeted. There was only about fifteen hundred dollars spent. And again, there's nine thousand five hundred budgeted again, and I'm just wondering if six thousand, in view of the fact that twenty twenty is probably gonna be at least a half year of COVID nineteen again, I'm just wondering whether that's another number that could be looked at. So I think we've drawn attention to three numbers here that, you know, if, depending on what the overall picture shows, and I'm gonna come back to the treasurer there for a second, um uh just to get a question out. Um uh if I could, please. Uh so to the treasurer, someplace in on our presentations, have you given us the overall picture? You pro- you probably have, and I just haven't remembered it. Uh can you draw our attention to what you think the overall ask is gonna be?
Yeah, um at the last uh meeting, we were at four hundred and thirteen. Uh I know with some of the amendments that I've done thus far, it has dropped to around three sixty and change.
Sixty what? Three sixty what?
Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars is the additional money that we're gonna need to, to be, to be completely balanced.
And three hundred and sixty thousand, what does that represent as a percentage increase over the twenty twenty tax rate?
You'll have to give me a second. Just a little over six percent.
Okay, a little over six percent. So can you tell me uh that's a little over six percent that um we would have to increase the tax rate by? And do you know what our median uh residential uh assessment is?
Um the la- the last time I looked at median, it was around one ninety eight.
Okay, and so what is uh, what would the six percent on a one ninety eight of median, median assessment uh generate in terms of raw dollars?
I'm sorry, uh Chair, I don't have that calculation. I was not prepared to answer that type of a question for this evening.
Okay, so that that's fine. We can just leave that hanging and maybe we can get those numbers for the next meeting. Um the, the point that I'm trying to make here is that uh the, the treasurer is telling us that, that, that the, that the drafts that we're seeing here tonight are part of a larger picture, which would require us to raise an additional three hundred and sixty thousand dollars or adjust the tax rate upward by six percent. So I, I think we should keep that in mind as we're reviewing these budgets here. Because at some point, we may be looking for five thousand here or two thousand there or three thousand someplace else. So uh that's why on this particular one, I'm, I'm not prepared to call the question on the recommendation that we agree in principle, but I think we've reviewed it. I think we've raised some questions about it, and I think we should move on, but.
My, my hands raised and I, I have a question.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I see your, I see your hand. Uh you just, I, I, I won't move on with the meeting until I've given everybody an opportunity to speak, so um I, I see your hand, and so I have you speaking and then Counselor Hunter.
Okay, um so mine's gonna go back to, and I think you just hit on it about, um uh just for a point of clarity and, and it's more of a question to uh Counselor Hunter and then uh back to Counselor Dilibah, but uh the way that I heard Counselor Hunter said that he wanted to move the motion and Counselor Dilibah said that he would second that.
Yes, and I said that as Chair, I wasn't calling for a motion. Counselor Hunter.
Unmute.
Hunter, you'll have to unmute.
Hear me now?
Yeah, gotcha.
I know you weren't calling for a motion thing, but I said, I think it's still the right of council to put a motion forward if that's the will of council to put a motion forward. And one thing of clarification when we're talking three hundred and sixty thousand overall in our budget right now, I think the treasurer alluded the last time in our meeting that uh this was taking nothing out of reserves, only what we had scheduled last year to come from reserves, which was just the thirty thousand dollars for the pump for the pool. So last year, we drew a lot of money out of reserves. This year, we've got the same amount of money scheduled to go into reserves, but we haven't looked at drawing any out. About three hundred and sixty thousand is, is a fictitious number now until we decide what we wanna take out of reserves to help cover it.
Uh that's a good point. And back to your earlier point, absolutely. If council wants to overrule me and uh put motions forward, as the Chair, I have to deal with the motions, no question about that. So I'll, but I'll put it back to you, and you wanna do that at this point?
I think this, I think this is a minor budget at this point here, and uh we always have the option during the year. We have a little bit of extra money in this budget that if we need it someplace else, we can move it if we have it in there, so. I'm prepared to make the motion that we accept the recommendation for the council budget.
Okay, so I, I, okay, uh so Counselor Hunter is making the motion. I see the uh, and if he gets a second or the Chair will deal with it, but I see that the treasurer has a hand up and would like to speak. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh through the chair, I just want to bring to committees uh uh direction or or notices that the uh council budget, and so the expense reimbursement policy where there's a uh an amount set aside for each member with respect to mileage and conferences and other such uh incidental expenses is preset in the expense policy. So if there is a major change to this particular budget, that um that policy would have to have either a resolution just for twenty twenty one to revise those um allocated amounts to each member.
And so what you're saying is that the honorariums, rather than being treated as a single uh as a single um uh line item for, for total uh uh council use is actually by a, by means of a, a policy or something, it's allocated on a per-member basis. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it, the uh expense policy outlines the uh honorarium annually, and that it also allows an allotment of expenditures to be reimbursed by, by different council members. And the budget, this budget is, is comprised of that allocation.
Now, do we do this, do we, do we do the same with the staff? Do we allocate to staff uh certain amounts for mileage and uh they can't go beyond that?
Um there isn't a limit specific. Uh there is a budget uh within each department specific for mileage.
Yeah, and it's, it's a, it's a, any member in the department has access to it until it's, I imagine until it's uh overrun. Is that correct?
Well, those are approved mileage claims.
Yeah, mm-hmm, exactly. Okay, all right, well, there's a, uh Counselor Hunter is trying to get a motion on the floor here. Does he have a second or? Okay, I see Counselor Dilibah, you wanna speak? Are you seconding or you wanna speak?
I'm second it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Hunter has a motion on the floor and he's got a second or. The committee agrees to the draft twenty twenty one council budget in principle. That includes any recommended committee amendments. As of this point, there are no recommended committee amendments. There's been some discussion, and uh I'll put, I'll deal with this motion first. Um so those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, can I see a show of hands, please? I see a four, one, two, three, four. Uh and those opposed? I see one, two, three. All right, so the motion is carried. Now I'll deal with the second part of the recommendation. Uh recommended committee amendments. Now, does any member of the committee want to make a motion to recommend amendments to this draft budget? And I think there's been three talking points raised here. Uh one had to do with I, line item fifty three thirty four. The other had to do with I, line item fifty three twenty eight. And uh can't forget where the third one was, but there's those two. Uh does anybody want to put a motion forward to make a recommended committee amendment? Okay, I see no one, nobody coming forward, so the motion has been carried. That completes the discussion of uh item number four A, and I'm moving on now then to item number four B, uh which is the draft administration budget. And so there is again a briefing note. And the briefing note indicates uh uh recommended that committee agrees to the draft twenty twenty one. That's the recommendation. Um um I'm just trying to take a quick look here. I had something marked here. The draft twenty twenty one under financial considerations on page three of twenty eight. The draft twenty twenty one administration revenues have increased from twenty twenty due to safe restart funding of a hundred and sixteen thousand eighty, eight seventy five for COVID-related expenses. There's a decrease of twenty thousand in bank interest revenue. Three thousand in accounts receivable interest has been adjusted based on twenty twenty actuals and a five-year average. So does any member of the committee have any questions uh with this draft administration budget? Uh Mr. Bradley and then Deputy Mayor Deshaun.
Mr. Mayor, I like, I'm still confused about draft in principle. Like, does this mean we're, we're setting this as the budget, or is this just another estimate?
Well, basically, when you approve something in principle and you, and the committee doesn't make any recommendations for adjustment, I would say you've locked it in. That's just my interpretation of what in principle means. Although, you know, I mean, I guess there's various interpretation of what in principle means. And I, I, I still feel uh that uh, I mean, committee has, the committee and council have the final word on this budget at the end. And if council's prepared to sec, to accept the six percent increase, so be it. You can live with it. I won't be voting for it.
Well, I mean, I mean, the, the, the point is why include the words in principle, like in, in an effort to read to the draft budget?
Yeah, 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 well, that's, it's a tie-in. The object is a tie-in. But that's clearly outlined in the purpose of the, of the briefing note. So I, I have Deputy uh Mayor Deshaun next, and then I see Mr. Grant Watson here.
Uh do you wanna make a point of clarification, C A O, or before I speak, or do you want me to just go ahead?
If, if, if the Chair were to entertain me speaking first, uh I, I, I wouldn't mind.
The Deputy Mayor defers to the, to the C A O.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh the, the, the concept in principle is that a, a, as it is right now, you're comfortable enough to set this portion of, of, of the budget aside, move, move forward through those so that when there's changes, then everything can be incorporated in to a, what we would consider a draft budget or a final review of the draft budget where there may be further adjustments. But for the, for the, for the basic point, the, 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 the numbers are what the numbers are at this, at this time.
Well.
Point I would make uh, Mr. C A O is that.
Hang on, Mr. Bradley. Hang on, Mr. Bradley. Uh uh the Deputy Mayor deferred to Mr. Grant. I would, I had recognized Mr. Grant first. So uh Deputy Mayor deferred to Mr. Grant, and so now I've gotta go back to Mr. Uh to the Deputy Mayor, and then I'll come to you. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, and, and I, I think um uh through, through the chair, and it's just going back to um the uh, you know, the discussion we just had about the, the council budget, and then we come to this one, and seems to me that maybe um uh we're struggling with the way the recommendation might be worded or the way, the way that it's written. Um because the way that I, I read the last one and this one is that it would include any recommended committee amendments. Um so to me, that would mean we would make amendments before and then we would, we would approve, and it seems like we did it backwards last time to me. So um and that we would move one recommendation versus, versus trying to move two like last time. And, and I, as well as, I think, Mr. Bradley, uh I'm a slight bit confused of what in principle means and um uh might be worthwhile uh asking for a little bit of clarity on, on those two points, if possible.
Well, the definition of in principle. Well, the definition of in principle is uh, defined in a dictionary. I didn't make it up. I know what in principle means. Uh, and I think it has a, a much tighter, uh, it has a much tighter meaning than uh, the staff ascribes to it. Uh, but I understand what the sta, what the staff is trying to do. They're trying to get these uh, they're trying to get these operational budgets set aside one at a time and then build on them as they build up. And I, that's a laudable, that's a laudable objective on the staff's part. Uh, but it does have a tendency to tie council's hands because uh, oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, in the end result, council has the end result. So if you vote for it, you vote for it. So uh, I know the chair recognizes Mr. Bradley.
Okay, well, uh, the question comes out of uh, the previous item uh, which we moved on from. And it deals with those two lines that we talked about, you know, fifty-three twenty-eight and fifty-three thirty-four. In the, in that item, we have ninety-five hundred dollars. We've spent fifteen hundred dollars and we might spend two thousand. And the point is
Excuse me, this, excuse me, Mr. Bradley?
Back on
Excuse me, this?
Yes?
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah, excuse me, Mr. Bradley. Uh, the motion is passed. I can't go backwards now.
But are we here to discuss the budget? Are we here to do a discussion or are we here to make motions and uh, are we here to approve these numbers?
That's, if, if you read, if, if, if members have read the briefing package in front of you, every briefing note starts with the purpose. And the purpose is uh, is congruent in, in all, through all five uh, all five um, operational budgets. It's congruent.
I see that, I see that.
Objective is to, the, the objective is to get the committee on record by means of a motion that they approve these drafts in principle. That's a, that's a, that's, that's a tie, that's, that's a tie-in. The staff is not going to look at these budgets again.
Well, neither will we.
Well, that's fair comment. Uh, unless we, unless we force our way back. Deputy Mayor Deshaun.
I, I think and, and with, with, with respect to where I think uh, Jack was trying to go uh, with that is that um, I, I think it, it alludes to at least a little bit of um, lack of understanding. So before we move to you know, the next four or five items on there, I think it's important that we uh, understand and make the um, amendments or, or recommend amendments before, uh, if people want to move them before we actually uh, deal with, with the full recommendation. Um, uh, you know, that way, Mr. Mr. Bradley now is trying to go back after we've already voted on the recommendation, but, but we, but we can't do that. So uh, dealing with them beforehand is, is the correct way to do it. I, I think that that there might have been a misunderstanding on the last.
Any other speakers to this issue? Okay, then I'm on uh, I'm still on uh, would really help if these pages were one-sided. Uh, because I'm flipping back and forth here. Uh, I'm at item number four B, which is the 2021 draft administration budget. Page three and page four is the briefing note that accompanies it. And page uh, five and page six are the uh, are the numbers. Does anybody have any discussion with regard to these numbers? Councilor Hunter?
I just have uh, one question to start with. Uh, when we're going down, I was looking over the calls here and it was alluded that we were looking at a halftime support staff that was budgeted last year that we in there, so it didn't really change the overall budget, but uh, under expenses on seventeen-five-one-oh-two for salaries. We uh, budgeted five hundred thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars last year. We spent five hundred nine thousand odd dollars, but this year we've only budgeted for five hundred and four dollars for wages and uh, the CPP is up by uh, and everything this year. We don't know how we come up with a number that we are actually budgeting for lower wages than what we had last year and everybody gets a wage increase this year, so we just wanted a little clarification how we ended up with a lower salary rate.
Through the chair, to the treasurer, please.
Sure, through the chair. The uh, the actual that's listed there does include with some uh, vacation payout that uh, council authorized uh, because several members were unable to take vacation during 2020. Rather than carry forward a large sum of uh, vacation into 2021, which would be unachievable to, to also take. Uh, council did agree to a payout of vacation that hadn't been taken in 2020.
Okay, so it, it was vacation that hadn't been taken in 2020 that was unbudgeted in the five hundred one eighty-five, five hundred thousand one eighty-five?
Well, well, it was unbudgeted in the sense that we paid everybody for their entire year and then council had approved a payout of any vacation paid, or vacation time that was untaken.
Okay, can you remind us what the quantity was?
Uh, right off the top of my head, no, I can't remind you of the quantity. It would have been a closed session that uh, that I'm sure the C A O would have brought to council to get, to get, to get direction to, to uh, proceed with that.
I, I just don't recall it, but uh, if it happened, it happened. My memory's not that good. Are there any other questions with regard to this draft? Deputy Mayor.
Uh, just two, one, two, maybe three quick, quick items, just for my own clarity. Uh, seventeen fifty-one hundred COVID nineteen wages and benefits for, for eighty-four uh, last year for ten months and we have budgeted eighty-five thousand uh, this year uh, uh, as well. So what exactly does the eighty-five thousand cover?
Through the chair?
Through the chair.
Through the chair, sorry.
Through the chair, the, the budget for twenty-one was set based on the actual spent in 2020.
Yeah, and through the chair, what, what was the eighty-four uh, nine spent on uh, this treasure?
Uh, that, that would have been wages with respect to uh, additional staff for COVID cleaning or COVID contract tick tracing uh, such, such as that.
Okay, so
I, I don't have the, I don't have the specific hours or number of hours specific to that.
So through, through the chair, just, so basically it, it works out to COVID nineteen, like overtime and wages or, or extra wages because of COVID nineteen?
Yes, correct.
And so if I may, uh, continue, uh, Chair?
Go ahead.
Um, which takes me down then to seventeen fifty-two oh four, which is COVID nineteen expenses. So the, the forty-eight one-six-six-two that's there is um, uh, not related to wages in any way. It's more signage and, and P P E or something like that?
Correct.
Okay, um, okay, that takes care of those two. And um, the last one, and I'm sure it's just a tiny little, tiny, tiny one, but the uh, seventeen fifty-one eleven, which is the CPP, um, is seventy dollars really all we're going to see in an increase there? I haven't done, I haven't sat down with my accountant yet, but I was to the understanding that it was going to be considerably higher this year um, for payroll deductions.
Uh, well, we have uh, several members that are actually at a max of P, of the CPP, so the difference between max is not going to be very much.
Not going to be that much. Okay, good. That answered my question. Thank you.
So uh, I'm going to get a question in here and then I'll recognize uh, Councilor Dillabah. And so the um, the, the two line items fifty-one zero zero COVID nineteen wages and benefits and fifty-one zero two salaries. Do those two line items cover the one additional full-time equivalent position uh, that was included in the 2020 budget? So is not an additional cost in 2021? I don't, I don't recall. I just don't recall the uh, one additional F T E position in uh, 2020, that's all.
Uh, well, it was in the, in the budget. Um, the COVID wages have nothing to do with the F T and administration.
Where's the F T Es and administration? Is that under salaries?
It would be under salaries, yes. We did not hire that additional person, so. Go ahead.
Okay, okay, so we didn't, we didn't hire the, the person.
Right.
But we still went over the five hundred thousand budgeted.
And I have explained that. That was with respect to vacation payout over and above everybody's full working hours. That was approved by council in a closed session.
Okay, so um, I'm just gonna uh, get this in here right now. Uh, I'm gonna ask the staff if they would uh, provide me with the minutes of that closed session. Other, and uh, I, actually uh, maybe uh, other council, other members of the committee may want to see it, but I, I would like to see the minutes of that closed session. Okay, so we're moving on and we know that that uh, that account for that uh, over expenditure on line item uh, five-one-zero-two. Now, are there any other questions with this uh, with this draft administration budget? Hey, I'm sorry, Councilor Dillabah. I had you on my list and dropped you. Sorry. Go ahead, please, and then I recognize Councilor Cameron.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, through the chair. Um, just some clarification. The group insurance is down six thousand dollars. Is that because we uh, did we go outside last year and, and looked at another provider and it came back cheaper? Is that the savings that we're seeing? Okay, and another one is our, the insurance. How do we know it's going to go up fifteen percent increase due to hard uh, markets? Is that what we're hearing or how, how did you arrive at fifteen percent?
Uh, through the chair, I'm through the chair, that's basically, yeah, that's basically just the industry standard amongst, amongst all the treasurers. Um, and the insurance provider has uh, had given a little bit of an indication that it could be anywhere from fifteen to forty percent. I went to fifteen percent because we're very low claims.
That it, Councilor Dillabah?
Yes, that's good. Thank you, uh, through the chair.
Councilor Cameron, Councilor Cameron?
Sorry, excuse me. Uh, yes, um, on line seventeen fifty-one twenty-five expenses, uh, allocated labor, could you explain that to me?
Uh, through the chair, allocated labor is usually another department like recreation or public works that is you, that is doing something around the uh, town township hall. And we didn't have anybody specifically uh, working um, from recreation and using that dollar value. But usually every year there's something with, uh, especially our facilities um, staff where they are doing a project within the township hall. They'll, they'll code their wages to that specific line item so we can track that they're not actually working uh, within their own function department.
Okay, thank you. And uh, then down at uh, again seventeen fifty-two oh five, the custodian, are we anticipating a three thousand dollar increase in uh, in custodian uh, um, work?
Uh, the year-to-date actual is uh, low because there was a period of time where we did not have a custodian in the town township hall. Um, but I anticipate that uh, we'll have a full year of custodial wages uh, coming forward in 2021.
Was uh, was the absence of a custodian due to COVID?
Uh, no, we had, we had our, had our custodian quit and we had to refine, find a new custodian.
Okay, is that, is that a custodian here at the, at the municipal office? Yeah?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, thank you. Um, now, uh, line fifty-three oh three, copying, uh, is this uh, is this outside copying?
The, through the chair, the copying costs are the uh, photocopier and uh, we are charged for every photocopy that is or anything that's printed on the, on the Xerox copier at the back. And uh, as the result of very large agenda packages and several copies made of those agenda packages, our copying costs were more than budgeted.
I see. So we own a, we own a copier, we use the copier, and then we, and then we charge ourselves for?
Uh, no, we don't charge ourselves for it. The company charges is that. It's basically uh, kind of a maintenance cost. We lease the copier. We don't own the copier.
Oh, I, okay, okay. Wow, that, that
Oh, is, can I just, uh, can I just jump in here, uh, Counselor, just for a second?
Certainly.
I just want to get a clarification on that. So this lease, is this lease a base lease plus per copy?
Correct.
So much per month plus per copy?
Correct.
Okay. All right, are there other questions with regard to this?
Yes, uh, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm, I'm still going here. Uh, go down to the last item of fifty-three oh nine, which is telephone, and I, I see we're we're ten thousand dollars, but we only use seven. Is that because we haven't got all the bills in yet?
There will, there could be a few more bills, but um, I don't think there's going to be uh, you know, three thousand dollars or two thousand dollars worth. Um, I don't, there's going to be a few more, but it won't be, it won't be that full, that full value.
Okay, and then going on to fifty-three ten, office equipment. Uh, does that include copiers?
No, the office equipment was a combination of uh, all the senior management tablets uh, bought by um, modernization money. Uh, some of the disaster recovery um, purchases that were authorized through modernization, stuff like that.
Okay, thank, uh, thank you on that. Um, and uh, now the, the next, the next one I have is the um, is the professional development uh, line, which is fifty-three twenty-nine, and we only used three thousand dollars this year. And we're looking at eight thousand is, I'm, I'm assuming that we didn't do a lot of it because of COVID. Is that, is that the correct answer there?
Yes, uh, as a, the restrictions of travel caused, uh, caused us to uh, do a lot of our stuff either through webinars or just not at all. Um, we've, staff has been extremely busy on all other aspects instead of training, unfortunately, in 2020.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item is my fifty-three thirty-one, which is courier service. Uh, so we, 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 we've added the courier to deliver the uh, the well samples. I see that. Um, is there an end in sight on that?
Through, 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 through the chair, uh, as, as long as it's getting utilized, I think we will, we will keep that service provided. I think we want to try to provide people as much uh, ease as possible to uh, to, to continue to uh, periodically sample their wells.
Okay, how much you, how much usage are we getting out of that?
Um, lately, it has been uh, uh, relatively low, one, one, one to two samples a week.
Any other questions here?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you don't, I, I just have a couple more if you, if you, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
The uh, go down, going down to emergency management, uh, we spent uh, just under twelve hundred dollars and we've got an eight thousand dollar uh, draft budget. Um, I'm just wondering why the uh, why uh, why would we do eight thousand? Through the chair.
Yes, through, through the chair, with the, with the pandemic in 2020, the requirement to, to do a training exercise was, was exempt. But certainly the plan for 2021 is to, is to complete that exercise, and I think certainly a, a little bit more than just a simple tabletop exercise.
I see, okay. And my last one, my last one, Mr. Mayor, would be the, the next, the next line, 5340, which is asset management costs. We've gone from 70, 7,500 to 15,000. And I see that was a decrease of 5,000 from 2020. But do we, are we anticipating another $8,000 or another $7,000?
Through the chair, not in 2020, but in, potentially in 2021, we'll be able to put ourselves back doing some more asset management work because we, we want to still be compliant for the next deadline.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Anybody else want in here? I have a couple of questions myself. And I'll look for hands, but I'm gonna get my questions on the floor here now. So I'm looking at page five and six at the same time. So on page five, I see that we have a $93,875 increase in revenue, but a $143,000 increase in expenses. Now that's, in expenses down as far as, as that line total, doesn't include any capital. So I just, I, I, I don't know how to square that circle. In other words, we're not, we're not only consuming all of the increase in revenue, we're going beyond it by about, you know, something like 50,000 or 43 to 90, yeah, roughly 50,000. So I find that a bit out of whack. All right, are there any other questions here? Counselor Cameron?
Yes, I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I did miss one. And again, through the chair, to the treasurer, line number 5346, bank charges. And we're referring here to the Port of Prescott because they got extra cards. I guess I didn't realize, or it wasn't made clear that these bank charges would be against the township and not against the, the Port of Johnstown. It, it's still, I, I'd just like some clarification on that, Madam Treasurer, if you would.
Certainly, through, through the chair, the, the Port of Johnstown is part of the township's banking agreeing, agreement with RBC. And as a result, all the bank charges come on one statement. I have had conversation with the port GM to try to split those charges between the port and township, but he does not feel that we should go to that minutia. He feels that the amount of admin fee that the port gives to the township that we should absorb his bank charges.
Thank you for that explanation, I hope I didn't open a can of worms on that.
Now, are these bank charges or are these charges for goods and services?
Bank charges, so things like file uploads, stop payments, corporate creditor services, the cred, the visa, annual payments for visas. And when they file, when you file a payroll file, there's a charge with respect to that, various charges like that. We range between $400 and $500 per month on bank charges. And the majority of, or I would say it's probably about a two-thirds, one-third split on, one-third being the port's charges specific.
Okay, so, but they cover their own actual purchases?
Oh, purchases, it has nothing to do with purchasing, it's the charges to use the banking services.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to distinguish. If, if they get a visa bill for $976 because they bought something, they pay the 976. Yeah, so we're talking bank service fees.
There is a charge, yes, bank service fees, is what we're paying.
Yeah, does that answer that question, counselor?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, where are we here? There's a couple of capital items on there. $60,000, which we're taking as, I'm just looking to see, the 60,000 is shown as other revenue at 4299, and expenditure for the ICG inclusive community grant funding. And I think there's a comment someplace that if the grant doesn't come through on the revenue side, the expenditure won't occur on the expend, on the capital side, is that, do we not have that assurance someplace?
So that, 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 that is correct, the, the retrofit is subject to the success of the grant.
All right, and then on the other capital, and there's a $75,000 capital item here for retrofit of the town hall entrances for accessibility, 60,000. Funded by ICG, by ICG, that, is that that same grant?
That, that, that is correct, the 60,000 above that is, is, is shown as revenue?
Okay, but I'm looking at the line that says 75,000.
Correct, so the, so, so the impact to capital, the difference in the impact to capital is 15,000.
I'm a little bit confused. Transfer to reserve capital is 40,000. And then is line item 17411 provincial grant 60,000, is that not a, an expenditure?
No, that's a, that's a, that's a revenue.
Well, that shows twice then, doesn't it? Doesn't it show at 4299? Line item 4299?
Forty.
No, that, that's not the same funding. The 4299 is something completely different, it's not ICG funding.
Ah, okay, all right, so I should be drawing a line on this page and separating the capital from what's above it. And then on the capital side, I'm seeing a revenue. Well, where's the revenue side of the, of the, of the ICG grant coming in?
Line 174111 is the ICG funding.
Oh, yes, it's got a bracket around it, that means it's a revenue, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, all right, I, I missed that, sorry. And then the 75 is the expenditure.
Correct.
Now, the retrofit of the town hall entrances is 60 of the 75, and the media system and flooring is 15 of the 75, is that correct?
Yes.
So if the ICG grant doesn't come in, and we don't get the 60 in revenue, then we don't spend the 60 on the town hall entrances, but we're still gonna spend the 15 on the media system and flooring, is that correct?
That, that is what's proposed, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so any other questions with this? Okay, so I see the CAO wants in here, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, one, one part that I would like to at least discuss a little bit is transfer to reserve capital, the 175902, the 40,000.
Go ahead.
And again, I, I guess my discussion is, we're, we're, the, the transfer to reserve, the capital was, was to undertake potentially some work on, on, on the upstairs of the town hall. And, and I guess my, my question, or at least to, to bring forward to committee for discussion is, do you, you know, do you want to continue to put that 40,000 away this year? Or is that an area where you may want to reduce, reduce that transfer to reserve for, for, for this year?
What line item does it show up on in the reserve account? On January the 8th, we received the draft reserve and reserve fund account. Where does that 40,000 transfer in? Let me see, was that, is it at the very first one, earmarked reserves, line item 013511? Is that where it gets transferred in? Okay, and the balance in that account, the balance in that account, if we transferred that 40,000 in, the balance at the end of the year would be 231,000, is that correct? Okay, so that's correct. And so the CAO has posed the question, does the committee still want to transfer that 40,000 into that earmarked reserve account? Don't hear any answers. Okay, Counselor Hunter, sorry.
All right, I think for, for this year, I don't think the upstairs renovation is something that's top priority on our list for improvements in the township right now. I think we could safely skip this year, putting that 40,000 in, in there, and that brings the administration budget. Like closer to online, that's 40,000 is almost a 1% tax.
Are you prepared to put that forward as a committee mo, a, a motion to the committee?
For, for, forward as a, an amendment to the.
Does Counselor Hunter have a second, or?
Yes, he does.
Deputy Mayor Deschamps? All right, discussion on that motion, if any. Gonna call a question on that motion, those in favor? That motion is carried, so the committee is making a recommendation. Committee is making a recommendation to an amend, for an amendment to this draft budget. Now, are there any other items to bring forward here for discussion? I've heard discussion around the 8,000 emergency management and 15,000 asset management costs, and 8,000 in professional development. Is, are there any motions coming forward as a result of those discussions?
Chair would be prepared to entertain a motion that those three items, which total 15, eight plus eight, which is a total of 23 plus eight, which is 31. The chair is prepared to entertain a motion to thought 31 be reduced.
Mr. Mayor, I'm getting a, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting a feedback, I, I can't hear you. I'm, I'm getting a feedback somewhere.
You got a radio on or something?
Some, is, are you in a, are you in a silent room?
You're better, you're better there, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I am.
Okay, there's not, there's no noise in my room here. Okay.
I, I think, I think we're, I think we're okay. The only, the only thing I would ask maybe is if, if, if those that aren't speaking, if they're able to mute until they're ready to speak, and that might help with any, with any potential feedback.
Okay, so I'm.
Can you, can you repeat, Mr. Mayor, please?
Okay, so I've put the question that there has been, I've heard, discussion around 15, the, the 15,000 for asset management compared to the seven spent, the 8,000 for emergency management compared to the 1,000 spent, and the 8,000 for professional development compared to the 3,000 spent. Those three items, 15 plus eight is 23, plus eight is 31. Those three items total 31,000, and I said the chair is prepared to accept the motion to reduce that 31,000 to some number less than 31. Is anybody prepared to put that kind of a motion forward? Hearing none, I'm about to move on. All right, I'm moving on. And so I have a recommendation in front of me that does include a recommendation from the committee. And the chair is looking for a motion, well, I'm not actually looking for it. If somebody wants to make the motion, I'll entertain it, I'm not prepared to call the question, to call for the motion. All right, I see no one moving the motion, I'm moving on. And I'm moving on to the next draft operational budget, which is draft budget number 4C, which is the draft policing, conservation authority, and cemetery budget. Now, again, these are the types of budgets which are basically beyond our control because they're coming to us as levies from a third party. And you've all seen, especially the policing one, which has come to us very well documented, I might say, and it's a lot better documentation that we were seeing four and five, six years ago. But you have the numbers in front of you there, and I'm not gonna, well, I'll just go through them quickly. There's about a $10,000 reduction due to a year-end adjustment, a 2019 year-end adjustment. As far as the conservation authority goes, the 2021 levy looks to be about $1,300 more than last year. And the cemetery's budget, the staff is putting it forward at the same amount as it was last year. You can see how close the actual expenditure was to the budgeted amount. So now, in this particular case, I am prepared to call for a motion that that recommendation, that those three budgets be accepted in principle. Is there a mover for that? Counselor Cameron moving. Does Counselor Cameron have a second, or? Deputy Mayor Deschamps seconds. And I'm gonna call the question on those three, those in favor? One, two, three, four, it looks like I've got five carried. opposed, if any? All right, I'm moving on, and I've gotta, just give me a minute, just give me a minute. All right, so the next one that we're looking at is item number 4D, which is the draft planning budget. And again, I'm a bit awkward because I have the briefing note on one side of the page and the budget on the other side of the page, so I'm gonna have to flip back and forth here. So, uh, the, the briefing note basically speaks for itself here. I'm just gonna open the floor for questions here. Questions, if any? Not hearing any questions. Discussion, if any? Counselor Cameron?
There, can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, there, I've got you now.
Okay, I was just, I'd like some clarification regarding the. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do not, my question mark look is, is not a question mark, I'm sorry. I, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask the question myself here to see, well, I'll give others a chance to, to formulate questions. In 2020, we budgeted for revenues of 16,000 and actually received revenues of around 12,000. But we're budgeting again for another 16 of revenues, so there's a $4,000 differential there of unrealized budgeted revenue. Can we put our fingers on the reason for the reduction in revenues? And are we likely to see the same reasoning apply in 2021? Through the chair, well, from the chair to the treasurer?
Again, I would caution the council or committee, looking at the year-to-date to some extent, although I think those numbers are accurate. I guess staff is optimistic that planning is still gonna continue. The, the economic area is certainly growing, and there's lots of demand for, for, for planning matters. I think, you know, COVID twenty twenty, certainly COVID put a little bit of kibosh on some of the activity, but we anticipate to go back to. Normal activity or close to normal activity in twenty twenty-one.
All right, and from a, from an expense side, we had budgeted sixty-eight thousand eight twenty, and it looks like we've expended eighty-four thousand. On the expense side, so, and we're budgeting to expend eighty-six. In twenty twenty-one, which is an increase of about eighteen thousand. Are we seeing that materialize on the ground with demand for service? Through the chair, or from the chair to the, the CIO and/or the treasurer?
Did you want to take that, Dave, or did you want me to answer that question?
Certainly, I can give it a try, and please, if, if there's anything that I missed, let me know. But I think the three main areas where, where you're seeing expense increases. Are legal, ninety-one, fifty-three, twenty-one. Which was up to, to, to around fifty-five, fifty-six hundred in, in, in twenty twenty, we're anticipating that. That, that there probably will be increased legal in twenty twenty-one. Nova Tech planning fees for, for additional assistance in, in, in a number of the more. Complex site plan and control agreements and other, other areas. And the, probably one of the bigger areas, it would be the zoning bylaw review. It's proceeding a little slower and. We anticipate that there'll be some additional meetings and additional. Public open houses or whatever can, can, can be accommodated as we work through that zoning bylaw process. So we're anticipating a little more level of, of, of effort with respect to our, to, to our planners this year. And that really are, are the three main areas of that, that show that increase.
Okay, now I missed the second of those three. Which I think was our contract, was that our contract amounts?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct, my apologies, yes, that's ninety-one, fifty-three, twenty-six.
Yeah, well, I'm going back to the first one, which was the legal one. Considering the amount of time we've spent with Mister Alton, Mister Leroy in the last couple of weeks, I can't, certain can't argue with the reasoning there. And I think as we get deeper into our project, discussed at the council meeting last night. We're certainly going to say the same thing happened with Nova Tech planning fees, so. There are, there are going to be increases on those two line items, that's for sure. And the zoning bylaw review. What are we budgeting, twenty-five, we spent twenty-two last year, managed to get in one or two or three meetings with Mister Pence, maybe more. And what, one draft or two drafts, I can't remember of the zoning bylaw.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe, I, I believe there have been two drafts and the. The, the plan would be at, at CDC in March to, to sort of approve that draft so that it can be distributed to the, to, to the public.
Okay, so there's the budget in front of you, um, and there's good rationale, I guess, for the increase, well, for sure. Good rationale for the increase in the expenditure there, which looks to be. Well, compared to what we actually spent in twenty twenty, it's a, what is that? Eighty-six compared to eighty-four. Not, not, not much of a, of an increase compared to what we actually spent, but a fair increase compared to what we budgeted. Okay, any further discussion here? Okay, Mister CIO again?
Thank you, Mister Chair, yes, we're, we're certainly over our anticipated budget in twenty twenty. And, and part of that reason is with, with respect to Miss Kinstry leaving, she has a little bit more of a. A planning background i- in comparison to, 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 to myself, so. I've been relying a little more a- as, as well as. Our, our community development coordinator relying a little bit more on, on, on Nova Tech. And, and I anticipate that that will be the case for the, for, for the next few years as we, you know, buil- build up our knowledge base.
Okay, fair enough, further discussion on this budget if any? Chair is prepared to move on, don't see a mover or a second for the recommendation. Councillor Hunter? You're still muted, councillor?
I'm prepared to move the recommendation.
Does councillor Hunter have a second?
I'll second.
It looks like Deputy Mayor Deschamps is seconding. Further discussion if any, hearing none, about to call the question, those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, the chair declares the motion carried. Okay, and so now I'm on the last one, which is seven E, which is the draft economic development budget. I have the briefing note in front of me there. And. Well, let's. Let's just take a look at it and, and I'll just open the floor for questioning. Do you have any questions with regard to this, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, of course, the St Lawrence Economic Corridor, can you give us an, an update of? You know, maybe what changes have been made? And, and give us a general feeling of how you're feeling about it?
Yes, I can. There is, there are winds of change, that is for sure. The. I have to be careful how much I say because some of these decisions were taken in camera and are being implemented as we go along. There will be, I'm, I'm going to speak in broad, general terms, I'm going to hope that you can interpret what I'm saying. There will be a drastic change in direction. Of the work of the commissioner. There will be a major change in administration and consulting to the commission. And. The other thing that I want to say is that. In view of the fact that some of those changes, that those changes are taking place. I've tried to reestablish a relationship, a professional relationship with the commissioner. And in fact, I've asked him to do. One or two specific assignments that I've asked him to undertake. And I'll say it without qualification, I've asked him. To, and by the way, just so nobody gets the wrong idea, I've asked both him and, and Weir from the County Economic Development Department. To try to work with Mister Ramesh. To explain to Mister Ramesh. How property has to be developed before you can, before we can issue building permits. And how important it is that he have a planner and an engineer on his team. And I've asked them to undertake that. Discussion with him, I've had reports back from both of them. Now, how much can I say here? I think that Mister Ramesh is slowly slipping away, if I can put it that way. And it appears on the basis of the last report that I had from the commissioner. That Mister Ramesh may be having some problems. With his. He stated that he had an option to purchase Ferrin Gruber lands. And there may in fact be a problem with that, which is causing him to look elsewhere. So, in summary to your question. And. And considering. The political implications of the commission. I think at this point, I'm prepared to recommend that we continue with it. But I've certainly signaled to the rest of the members of the Board of Directors of the Commission that. I'm not a happy camper and. Unless these changes are executed as per our recent discussions. I'll be recommending that we get out, but I'm not prepared to do that at this point. Councillor Dilavah? You're, you're muted councillor, and by the way councillor, just before I entertain you, I, I apologize Deputy Mayor, I should have asked Deputy Mayor if he had a follow-up, so. Follow up to the Deputy Mayor first.
No, I, I, you know, I, I think that's a, a pretty good, I've had several conversations about. The economic corridor and, and how it, how it is changing and I felt. You know, you know better than all of us because you're in, in all of the meetings on, on how to guide us. Down the road and I think it's a valuable insight that you share and that we follow the leadership. Especially with the economic corridor and, and your opinion on it, I, I think it's important that, that we continue to show that collaboration and. And I'm glad that you stated it the way you did.
Well, I'm not all the way across the bridge yet, but I'm getting there. So now I'll recognize councillor Dilavah and then Mister Bradley, councillor Dilavah.
And then. Yeah, thank, thank you, Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, we went down that road last year too. Same thing.
No, 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 we didn't.
Well, you know, are we getting out, are we doing this, and we give them a chance to come to the, to the plate? And I, I'm, I'm strongly going to reckon, I'm on your side, I mean. We're going to go by your leadership here for sure, but we have been down that road with this. With this thirty thousand dollars from the St Lawrence Corridor before either we're getting in or getting out. So I am going to take your leadership role and I'm happy for the update of what you said on.
Well, thanks very much, appreciate your confidence, but, you know, just please understand that. There are a couple of new players been appointed to the Board of Directors. And the most notable of those comes from Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. And this gentleman is. Showing himself to be not afraid to step up to the plate and speak directly to the. Speak directly to the chair, Mister Beatty. And I'm going to quote something that he told me and he didn't tell me in confidence, so I can quote it. And that is that if changes aren't made, the commission will cease to exist. And I think Mister Beatty has got the message, I know that other members of the Board of Directors have got the message, so. You can say that we've been down this road before, but. We've tried to get on this road before and didn't get much traction from other members, but we're getting traction now from the other members. So, again. Okay, does that answer your question councillor? And I got Mister Bradley next and then Mister.
It does, thank you very much.
So Mister Bradley and then councillor Cameron?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, I, I think, aren't we obligated anyway because of the scheduling to continue with this payment for this year, this coming year?
One of the things that's changing, and I have assurances that it will change, we get out with six months' notice.
So is June the payments made though, isn't it?
Well, I've kind of looked, even though the commission sort of works on a, well, actually it doesn't. It, it, it works on a, on a, on a calendar basis. And we make our payment on a calendar basis. And we generally, if the treasurer can correct me here, but I think we cash flow our annual. Levy from the commission on a calendar basis, the, the whole levy in one shot, do we not, treasurer?
Through the chair, yes, the payment is made in one, in one payment. Initially, when they first started back three years ago or so, they divvied up the payment initially, but now it's annually, it's usually around. Mid, mid-year. Because we started mid-year.
Yes, and so basically we started mid-year and that's what got us into the half-year stuff. But we're now, now operating on a calendar basis, so with a six-month out. That says to me that even if we cash flow the entire years, that we cash flow the entire years. Levy. We don't necessarily have to be in for the full year, but my suggestion would be something like this. If we're going to get out. Or if council is even prepared to think about getting out, maybe what we should do this year is just cash flow half of our annual levy and. That'll get us basically paid up till the end of June, if I can put it that way. And even if we have to give warning at the end of June. To get out at end of December and we have to pay the other half, we have to pay the other half, but it'll be. After we've given, given good, given notice and, you know, been fair about it all.
I was just thinking from a planning point of view, if somebody could make it note that we would have a update in June, at the June meeting. As to. The improvements if any, and let us make a decision of continuing or not continuing. In the, in our June meeting.
Yes, well, and, and, you know, I appreciate Deputy Mayor asking me the question. Because this is something that I sometimes hesitate to report on, or I forget to report on it. The commission is only meeting now once every three months, which. I mean, I have to be honest with you, there's. From a whole commission point of view. How do I want to say this, we're not in camera, so I have to be kind of careful here. I, I wish that we were in camera, I could be a lot more forthright.
I think we get the message.
Yeah, I, I hope you do because. I'm going to tell you this, and I say this without a shadow of a doubt. Edwardsbury Cardinal Township is a mile and a half to three miles ahead of any of the other townships. Or any of the other separated towns. We have more activity going on in our township right now than any of them can match. And I've only been able to share with council what. Some of the proponents that are working on projects have shared with me, and they've asked me not to. To divulge what they're doing until they're ready to make the announcements public. And, and that's, and that's their right, I mean, it's their story, they're the ones that are making the investment, it's their right. That I don't make public announcements or public pronouncements about their intentions before they're prepared to do so. But that being said. I think. A couple of these are at the point where I can share some things with council. In an in-camera session, and there are about four big things that are happening. And. I, I have a hard time finding a way to get in the camera to do it. Because I'm limited by the kinds of reasons to go into camera. And I went a little bit far there and got called up kind of short for it a few weeks ago and apologized for that. But no decisions were made, I just made a report on a couple of things. But if I could just find a way of getting into camera to kind of share with council some of the big things that are coming down the pipe. I think you'd be amazed, but I, I, I'll maybe leave the, leave that assignment to the CIO to, and to the clerk, I know she's listening. To try to find a way to, to allow me to get into camera with council to. And, and I would like to actually to do it at this committee level because I think Mister Bradley and Mister Robertson have been with us now for the better part of. You know, of. Six years, and I regard them as, as integral members of the committee. And I think this is the committee where those things should be shared, so. I sort of put that forward as a challenge to the clerk and the CIO that I'd like. that I'd like to discuss about four or five items in committee that, that the township is not buying or, or acquiring property. But there are secrets out there that pertain to other proponents. I'll just leave that with you. Okay, so here we are at this uh, uh, Admin Finance, a draft economic development budget. And you noticed that I didn't say anything about the way the, 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 some of the uh, the costs are, are uh, uh, increasing a little bit here because I think we are gonna be using Nova Tech heavy, heavy in the next year. Anybody have any questions of this budget? Counselor Cameron first.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to go with the recommendation. Uh, however, I just want to uh, draw your attention to the uh, the briefing note and it's on page uh, twenty-six, the second last paragraph referring to the Cardinal uh, um, uh, Hydro Fund uh, to pay the uh, to pay the thirty-four thousand dollars. I am totally opposed to that, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, that's not what that fund is set up to do. And uh, with all the expenses that, that we've seen, other than the area. Um, I uh, I am totally opposed to using that fund.
Well, then you better not be in favor of the recommendation.
Well, the recommendation does not mention anything about using that fund. That's only in the, and it says it is for an option. If it is going to be used, I'd like to know about it right now and I will not support it.
So, for, uh, through the Chair to the staff.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, uh, I believe as Counselor Cameron alluded to, it was, it was provided as an option uh, for uh, if uh, if committee wanted to look at that uh, that, that would be a further reduction, right, with the, with, with, with revenue taking from, from the uh, from the Hydro Fund.
That answer your question?
It is not included within what we're proposing right now.
Yes, it is.
It answers your que- it answers your question, Counselor?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, further discussion on this uh, on this budget here? Anybody? Counselor Hunter, you getting your hand up there?
Yeah. Just uh, we're in this uh, planning thing that we've been over for this thirty thousand dollar, dollars. This uh, to me is bringing back ma- memories of a certain wood project thing that the township paid money in for years. We didn't get anything out of it and I think this is so economic development, one is another one that I don't see much coming out of it. I agree with you that we, they're trying to get uh, new leadership and, and uh, and such for it, but uh, I'd be of the mind that we give them notice that if we don't see something different by mid-year that we give her, that we're gonna give her notice to withdraw out of it at the end of the year.
Well, I, I'll tell you, uh, I've, I've given you a, a kind of a, a, a high-level picture as best I could. Uh, if we can get into a closed session uh, to discuss the Commission at the next Admin Finance meeting, which would be in February or, or possibly before that, if the staff can arrange it. I can speak a little bit more freely and then following that, I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to council. If, if, if a counselor wants to put a motion on the floor, the council table or the committee table, that we serve notice. Um, I mean, I'll deal with it the same as I dealt with the ones that are put on the floor tonight. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna walk away from it, but I'm, I'm not inviting it and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to ride, I'm trying to ride the, I'm trying to ride the fence here, I'll be honest with you. I'm trying to ride the fence. And see what happens. I'll tell you one thing right now, the Commissioner and I have had some pretty direct discussions. And I mean really direct, about where he's wasted four years of our time. And I haven't pulled any punches, not the least. And I have never used counsel, I have never used counsel as my, as my reason. I've used it strictly my feeling towards the way he has conducted his office. So I'll leave that and I, I got your point, Counselor Hunter, and I, I would invite you to uh, you know, give me an opportunity in a closed session and then follow through as you may. Mr. Bradley, do you want in here? You're muted, Jack.
Have we been four years, like a hundred and uh, twenty grand into this deal?
Twenty-eight thousand a year for, is it four years now? Sorry.
Yes, I believe that. Sorry, yeah, I believe this is our fourth year, yes.
Yeah. My apologies to the Treasurer for use of a first name. So, yes, Mr. Bradley, this, this will be our fourth year, yeah.
Well, we have a lot of other items in our budget that if we uh, you know, in, at the level of a hundred grand and we chip away at those, and I, I don't know, I just uh, I mean, we haven't seen a single thing come out of this commission.
Can't argue with you. There's always, you know, and the, and the darn thing about economic development and all, and, and I think we have to recognize it is that things develop slowly in the background and they percolate away underneath. And um, I, I think I think I'm fairly honest with you when I tell you, our, our council just makes things happen. And, and, you know, we, we push things forward where other, other uh, townships rely on the Commissioner and they rely on Anne Weir and they rely on, on uh, third parties to make things happen and, and we just don't do that. So it's very hard for the Commissioner to get, to bring any value directly to us because in every single instance that, that I've shared something with him, I've told him without, with no uncertain terms, especially it came, as it came to Mr. Ramesh. This is my lead, it's our township leading this, it did not come from you but I think you can help me by speaking to him. Don't you ever, and I've told him, don't you ever refer to this as one of your initiatives. And he respects that.
So, uh, we haven't seen any benefit from this, but has any other township or separated town seen any benefit from this commission?
Well, I'll tell you where they see, they think they see benefits. One of the things that the Commissioner did during the uh, COVID crisis was he brought a group of the larger uh, businesses in the United Counties to the table to discuss how they might interpurchase from one another. And there were a couple of really significant wins. I mean, they were wins. Where a company that is lives in, lives in our United Counties was purchasing one of their input products from Mexico. Now purchases it from a company next door that has that same by-product available. Neither one, before the Commissioner brought them together, was aware that one company needed the, the, the material for input and the other company had it available as waste product. Neither one of them were aware of that. And that happened on at least two that I know of and possibly three um, interchanges that he put together at a high level with very high-level uh, input uh, amongst the people that were working together. So, so do you count that as a win? You can say that there's no new jobs, but you can also say, you know what? It was good for United Counties. It, it, it stopped two companies from outsourcing not only out of Leeds and Grenville, not only outsourcing out of Ontario, but outsourcing out of Canada to, outsourcing right in our own county. So that's just an example.
Okay, well, I guess before we uh, before we cut the check, I, I think we should review it again.
Fair enough, fair enough. All right, Chair is looking for a direction here, folks. Where's, what's your druthers? Counselor Cameron, you spoke about recommendation at one point. How do you feel?
Yes, as, as uh, as Mr. CIO uh, pointed out, the, the uh, that the uh, um, the idea in the paragraph was an option and uh, that's uh, as long as it remains an option, I don't mind discussing it again. I lost battles before and I could lose another one, but uh, at this point in time, the recommendation makes no mention of the option uh, being involved, uh, if I, I would be more than happy to move the recommendation.
Do you have a seconder? I see Deputy Mayor Deschamps seconding. Do I have further discussion on this recommendation? Hearing none, I'm about to call a question, those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. All right, I'll call the motion carried. Okay, so uh, that basically concludes the agenda as I have it in front of me. I'll move to item five on the agenda, which is council inquiries, notices, a motion. Are there any inquiries, inquiries or notices, a motion here this evening? Hearing none. I'm about to move to item number six on the Mayor's report. Mayor has no report tonight, but I'm gonna tell you one thing. Uh, and I never thought I would say this. Uh, this is one week from hell. I think I have a total of about fifteen-minute meetings this week and tomorrow I have three meetings scheduled all at the same time. And, and one of those is a very important meeting with Ontario Hydro. Uh, and the other one, of course, that's at the same time is MP Barrett's update. And at the same time, the United Counties Ha- uh, Housing Task Force. So, uh, the only reason I'm saying that is that there are big things happening in the United Counties and they're centered here. So I'm gonna move on to uh, the adjournment. Uh, Chair is looking for the motion to adjourn. And Mr. Bradley, and is there a seconder? Uh, Counselor Cameron, and uh, non-debatable, those in favor?